Let it go.
Time to use everything, bros. If you could silence yourself, folks, we appreciate that. And we have a couple awards to give out tonight. Gary's gonna do the reading. For the first one.
I think I have Don and Sylvia Gray come up, please.
Don, Sylvia.
This is forthcoming back May, this is May 14th, 2024. The 2023 Nury May Spirit of American Foundation Tribute honors Donald and Sylvia Gray for commendable community service. Sylvia served as the town's administrative assistant from 1990 until June 30th, 2004. During that time, she held many other positions such as health officer, town agent, registered voters, election warding, member of tri-town solid waste committee, member of the town's comprehensive land committee, and a member of the Nury Celebration Committee. Don serves the main gate one for more than 40 years. He founded the main gate one conservative search investment team. Don and Sylvia Gray are hereby recognized for their lifetime contributions to the town in Nury with 2023 Nury Spirit of American Foundation Tribute. Select Board Gary White, Virgil King Kong Lake, and Mandy Berry.
All I can say is, brother, house is a sneak. We have another one. A charity come up?
This is Spirit of America Award for 2024 Town in Nury Honors Charity for Compendable Community Service. 2024 Nury May Spirit of American Foundation Tribute Honors Charity for his commendable community service. Charity has kept the town cemeteries looking beautiful for the past 20-plus years. The charity, which was more than a job, it was a dedication to keep them looking the best they could be. The town thanks you for your service to our community. Charity, you are hereby recognized for the lifetime contribution to the town in Nury for the 2024 Nury Spirit of American Foundation Tribute. Select Board Gary White, Virgil King Kong Lake, and Mandy Berry.
I just gotta work my way around this. So now we're not the real meeting. To Andy Henley, a resident of the town in Nury, county of Oxford, and state of Maine. Graves, in the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby directed to notify and warn inhabitants of the town in Nury, the same county and state, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, and to notify and warn inhabitants to meet the Bay of Rachel, 6:00 PM in the evening, to act on the following protocols, 1 through 43, as set out below. Out of the way, to choose their moderator by secret ballot to preside at said meeting. Any nominations are open?
I'll nominate for next one.
That's all we have? Okay, nominations closed. I need two written ballots, please. Up here are ballots. Come up here and we're gonna bring your ballot box. Ballot box is now closed. Bird. Bird. Well, bird. Three little bird. Now I get to swear at you, Maran. I know. I've earned Maxwell to swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and that this state shall rise up and continue to citizen their office. I've earned Maxwell to swear that I have faithfully discharged to test my abilities the duties incumbent upon me as a moderator of said meeting according to the Constitution and law of state. And I have one more last one I need to make. In the town board, we kind of left out David Barland as one of the school board directors. So David Barland is a school board director along with Andy Henley and Meredith Taylor. Thank you for your service, people.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to having me. Just wanted to over a few things. Actually, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance before we start?
We love our United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just perhaps keeping things, my pressure is much as yours. And just like your approval to use the main moderator is manual, for the meeting, please no objection to proceed with that. I will not accept a negative motion or a pass over the article motion. We have to act on it, up or down. Just so you know, ordinances cannot be amended tonight on the floor. And I'll give everybody a chance to see, but I will not recognize a receipt speaker until our first time speakers take their opportunity to address the attendees. And with that, our lead article is through. And I might go up now. Can I have a motion to allow Gerald Allen to speak during the meeting?
I'll make the motion to allow Gerald Allen to speak.
Sorry. They're moving second. Any questions? Turn now. All those in favor? Thank you. Any total? You've got to speak for a while. When the time. Article 2, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for administration of salaries. The recommended amount is $395,709. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to raise the money?
Second motion.
They're moving second. Any question or discussion on Article 2? Not seeing any then. I'd ask for your vote. All those in favor of Article 2 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article 2 is approved as presented. Article 3, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for ambulance service. The recommendation is $18,750. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to raise the money?
They're moving second. Any question on Article 3? Yes, sir. How much did we appear in one of you?
Last year we budgeted $17,215. And their rates went up. They went from 42 per capita. They go by population. We have the last census, they have us at 411. And then we have a representative that goes to a meeting, we pay them that.
Anything else on Article 3? Not seeing anything. I'd ask for your vote. All those in favor of Article 3 is read and explained. Please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. Any opposed? Article 3 is approved as presented. Article 4, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for assesses expense. The recommendation is $13,750. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money?
They're moving second. Any question on Article 4? Not seeing any then. I'd ask for your vote. All those in favor of Article 4 is presented, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 4 is approved as presented. Article 5, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for maintenance of the cemetery. The recommendation is $6,000. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money?
Second motion.
They're moving second to raise the money. Any question on Article 5? Not seeing any then. I'd ask for your vote. All those in favor of Article 5 are read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 5 is approved as presented. Article 6, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for committees and boards. The recommendation is $20,650. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money?
Second motion.
Any question or discussion on Article 6? Not seeing any then. I'd ask for your vote. All those in favor of Article 6 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article 6 is approved as presented. Article 7, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for talent special recreation for Nury kids. The recommendation is $4200. Could I have a motion?
Make a motion to raise the money?
Second motion.
Thank you. They're moving second. Any question on Article 7? Not seeing any then. I'd ask for your vote. All those in favor of Article 7 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 7 is approved as presented. Article 8, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for community assistance. Okay. The recommendation is $23,986. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money?
It's been moved consecutive. Any question on Article 8? Not seeing any then. I'd ask for your vote. All those in favor of Article 8 are read, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article 8 is approved as presented. Article 9, see if the town will vote to appropriate money received from the cable franchise agreement to the Western Main Access Channel, a television channel or other. If recommended, you pass. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to pass?
Second motion.
They're moving second. Any question on Article 9? Not seeing any here again. I'd call for your vote. All those in favor of Article 9 is presented, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 9 is approved as presented. Article 10, to request additional funding of $5,000 to put toward operating current broadcast server infrastructure. This upgrade is critical for the operation of the television station and compatible live streaming service, and it is reaching the end of functional capability and will no longer be eligible for hardware software support. We will be asking each town in our coverage area for this additional contribution. Any leftover funds from the server purchase will be put toward the yearly software-associated installation costs and software hardware assurance fees. It is anticipated that these services will last at least five years. The recommendation is $5,000. Could I have a motion?
Make a motion to raise the money?
Thank you. They're moving second. Any question on Article 10? Not seeing any then. I'd ask for your vote. All those in favor of Article 10 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 10 is approved as presented. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to authorize municipal officers to borrow an appropriate or unappropriated surplus, the sum of not more than $2,000, to be used as they deem advisable to unanticipated expenses and emergencies that occurred during the fiscal year 24, 25. Passage is recommended. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to pass.
Second motion.
They're moving second. Any question on Article 11? Not seeing any then. I'd ask for your vote. All those in favor of Article 11 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 11 is approved as presented. Article 12, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for grimshaw maintenance. The recommendation is $13,100. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money?
Second motion.
They're moving second. Any question on Article 12? Yes, sir.
Is this a regular maintenance?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Not seeing anything else. All those in favor of Article 12 is presented, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 12 is approved as presented. Article 13, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for highways and bridges. The recommendation is $314,000. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money? Second.
Thank you. Moving second. Any question on Article 13? Yes, sir.
Is that for just general upkeep on broken bridges for the year? Would that also include the storm damage?
Not the damage, no. Regular maintenance.
Is the storm damage being paid for by the state?
No. We'll come to that later. A little further up.
Just kidding.
Yes.
Your question.
Yes.
Anything else on Article 13? Not seeing any then. I'd ask for your vote. All those in favor of Article 13 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 13 is approved as presented. Article 14, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for repair of a silenced road bridge. The recommendation is $80,000. Could I have a motion to break this off?
Make a motion to raise the $80,000?
Second.
It's been moved consecutive. Any question on Article 14?
Where is this, please?
Right below my house.
Black bear.
Right below my house.
Last year we voted, um, stake vote. So $200,000, this is to finish it. It wasn't enough. So the twin engineer and the repair, so we have to add another 80 to our 200 square.
Thank you. Anything else? If nothing, I'd call for your vote. All those in favor of Article 14 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 14 is approved as presented. Article 15, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the purpose of paying fees or charges required for membership in the main municipal association, property, and casualty risk pool and other town insurance costs. The recommendation is $128,200. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money? Second.
Thank you. It's been moving second. Any question on Article 15? If nothing, I'd call for your vote. All those in favor of Article 15 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 15 is approved as presented. Article 16, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for operations and maintenance of a municipal building. The recommendation is $44,300. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money?
Second motion.
They're moving second. Any question or discussion on Article 16? Not seeing any then. I'd call for your vote. All those in favor of Article 16 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article 16 is approved as presented. Article 17, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for operation and maintenance of fire department. The recommendation is $141,662. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money?
Second motion.
Any question on Article 17? Yes, sir.
What's the big jump for the budget to share in the fire department?
Equipment. Need to update some of your equipment. That has not been updated. Operations and maintenance. Salaries are staying the same. Electricity went up. Cause you're gonna want to complete. So, and you also have to find a county training that we put in $50,000.
Good question. Anything else? If not, I'd ask for you. For the vote, all those in favor of Article 17 is read and explained, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. Any opposed? Article 17 is approved as presented. Article 18, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for sanitation, pay all fees and membership charges for tri-town solid waste. The recommendation is $459,000. Do you have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money?
Thank you.
Second.
They're moving second. Any question on Article 18? Yes, sir.
I thought a while after you were talking about getting out of that program in tri-town. Was there any discussions in the last couple of years?
We had a discussion. We have no place in Nury that we could put one. Sites that we saw that people did not want to sell, and then it would probably, and then to get the service to actually be approved through the state and the one, and then to get somebody to haul it is enough for them. So it doesn't look pretty for us to be pulling out. Stay where we are for now. We really should change. There's been talk of changing construction debris, getting scales at the transfer stations. Everybody has to go over them and charge that way. But again, it's three times, so you gotta get the other two to want to do it too. But there's talk about, so. In the meantime, this is what we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article 18? Not seeing any then. I'd call for your vote. All those in favor of Article 18 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 18 is approved as presented. Article 19, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for streetlights. The recommendation is $1,000. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money?
Second.
They're moving second. Any question on Article 19?
Where's the street light?
Where is the street light?
That was my question to you. I knew here.
We have, I think, I believe we have six total, but most of them are over on Thunder River side. The ones over here, the one by the town office we probably paid for, and other than that, they're over there. And actually, they're all LMD lights now, and the budget went down. The only budget was $1,000. Last year we budgeted $1,200, and we've only paid like $800.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Not seeing any. I'd ask for your vote. All those in favor of Article 19 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article 19 is approved as presented. Article 20, shall the town authorize municipal officers to carry forward unextended balances as they deem necessary? All other unexplained balances to latch to fund balance. Could I have made this pass? Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to pass.
That's right, yeah. They're moving second. Any question on Article 20?
Do you have the aggregate for all of the unextended balances?
No. Not on that set. Now they're already done. It's probably complete yet. Much to our benefit.
All right. Any other question on Article 20? If not, I'd call for your vote. All those in favor of Article 20 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 20 is approved as presented. Article 21, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for digitizing town of Nury tax maps and revising the paper maps. Recommended pass at $6,000. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money?
Second motion.
They're moving second. Any question on Article 21?
I'll give a quick question. I mean, it sounds like a really good idea. If those maps are digitized, would citizens have the ability to get to like electronic copies of that? Just curious.
Yes, they're on our website. You have to go to our website, and it's GNS mapping, and you can put in your name or your street, and it comes up. We update it every year. Try to update it every year. As long as it's been working.
All right. Very good. Good.
Anything else on Article 21? Not seeing anything. I'd call for your vote. All those in favor of Article 21 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 21 is approved as presented. Article 22, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the Sunday River School, House, or Panel. $4,000 is recommended. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money?
Second motion.
Thank you. They're moving second. Any question on Article 22? Yes, sir.
What is that money used for?
Flowers, cleaning, mowing. We have two of the ladies here that help us with the flowers. Mandy and, um, I don't know, Jill. Sorry, Jill. They help take care of the log, and this year we do want to get a historic register signed that went on the building.
A new window box is to.
Oh, a new window box. And we want to get painted, but that'll be next year because they didn't get last mint in time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any question? Any other questions on Article 22? Not seeing any then. I'd ask for your vote. All those in favor of Article 22 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article 22 is approved as presented. Article 23, to see what action the town wishes to take for guiding allowing municipal officers to spend up to 10% of their capital improvement account without seeking prior town approval. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to pass.
They're moving second. Any question on Article 22?
Is that during one calendar year, just 10%?
Yes.
Okay.
Fiscal, fiscal, not calendar.
What's that?
We're on a fiscal year, not calendar. This is a fiscal year. Don't blame the spenders. Anyway.
Any other question?
Um, well, we have different ones. I must say that 400 and some thousand, which is 200 and some for the fire department, and the other part is for municipal. 481,362.
Any other questions? Not seeing any here again. I'd call for your vote. All those in favor of Article 23 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 23 is approved as presented. Article 24, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for capital improvements in the fiscal year 25. Affinity, LED, LED lighting, all town buildings, $37,584. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money?
Second.
They're moving second. Any question on Article 24? Yes, sir.
Is this for the total bill?
Yes.
So Nury decided to pay in just one payment?
Yes.
No other payments?
Nope.
Okay.
Yes.
Where are the LED lights at?
Fire station, both fire stations, branch hall, and town office.
So they're, you just, you're not going to light something?
They're in indoor lighting. Like, all the files at the office are getting outdated, A. B, journals in the dark in her office. Because they're not going to use those same lights anymore. So in the fire station, you got LED lights probably five years ago, and these new ones, I suppose they'll last seven, 20 years, with 70 years. And they're upgraded. They have more lumens? Lumens.
They're bright, dude.
Yes.
Yeah, and they have sensors on them so that they detect daylight and.
Yeah, and they have sensors on them so that they detect daylight and adjust accordingly.
Like, if we're hot in the room, they would go back when we walk around.
So is that exterior lighting, or is it interior?
Interior. Yes.
So in a room like this, will the fixtures be replaced to a new LED light?
I'm not exactly sure what they're going to do with this one upstairs here. I know at the office, and they're going to follow where we have, but... But I, you know, when we got here today, I thought, I wonder what they're going to do up here? Because that I don't know, I can't tell you.
Yeah, but it seemed to the little amount that the lighting is used here to change the character of the space,
My understanding is that they're not supposed to be changed in there.
Okay.
But we can verify that if it's getting improved or not.
Well, does your get screwed in the boat?
Yes, I was at the meeting, and there was a lot of unanswered questions. First of all, it was my understanding that this organization approached the town.
No.
No?
No. We contacted them. Me and Lori had been to a training, and they were a vendor at the training. They brought back information, and I contacted them. They came up and toured all of our buildings, and took months to make up their plan for us. And then we invited them to a select one screening, yes.
So are screwing bolts, LED screwings in the plant?
They don't say exactly what kind of bolt they have.
I think they do have them here.
Yeah, I'm not sure what they're going to do up here. I didn't even, we didn't even ask that at the, but they've got more information. If anybody wants to come to the office and look at these, we can have it for them.
Well, as someone who uses this building, it looks really great here now because the sun is out. But when it's not, it's dark. And it's hard to see, like, when we have the craft there, there, the people upstairs complain about how dark it is. It's probably crap, maybe, so. Yeah, these look nice, but they're not really that great at providing lighting.
Look at the lights, it's going to be brighter.
Thank you. Anything else? I said, Article 24? If so, I ask you for your vote. All in favor of Article 24 is read and explained, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 24 is approved as presented. Article 25, to see if the town will allow the municipal officers to sell or dispose of any town property with a value of not more than two thousand dollars under such terms and conditions that they deem advisable. Is recommended to pass? Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to pass.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 25? Not seeing any then. I ask you for your vote. All in favor of Article 25 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article 25 is approved as presented. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to fund the following capital reserve account under city reserve funds. Town building reserve fund at seventy-five thousand, and the higher mountain reserve account at seventy-five thousand dollars. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to pass.
Certainly. Been moved and seconded. Do you have any questions on Article 26? Not seeing any then. I call if you vote. All in favor of Article 26 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 26 is approved as presented. Article 27, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the forest higher reserve account. Recommendation is five thousand dollars. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money?
Certainly. Been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 27? Yes, sir.
What's the dollar up to now?
Forty-nine thousand. Somebody borrow something? Say forty?
Any other questions on Article 27? Not seeing any then. I ask you for your vote. All in favor of Article 27 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 27 is approved as presented. Article 28, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the animal control officer. Recommendation is three thousand dollars. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise the money?
Second the motion.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded. Any questions on Article 28? All in favor, please? Yes, sir.
Do we actually have any local officer now?
Yes, we do. Eric Jerome.
Who is it?
Eric Jerome.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
I don't know. Yeah. That's okay.
The dog with the cat.
Yeah.
Did you ever visit the town?
Yeah.
Oh, wrong word.
He was, um, Roffler. Assistant chief of the town. He's the assistant chief of Roffler. He's on call twenty-four seven, and he hasn't been available. I haven't had any complaints about it.
Hang on, though.
Yes, exactly.
Any other questions on Article 27? Not seeing any then. I call if you vote. All in favor of Article 27 is read and explained, uh, 28, I'm sorry. Article 28 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 28 is approved as presented. Article 29, to see if the town will vote for appropriate money received from registrations and fines of dogs to enforce the animal control laws. Passage is recommended. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to pass.
Second the motion.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded. Any questions from you?
Where does the money come from now?
Where does it come from now?
Well, before, we, the last couple of years, we have paid it in control law, so we should now put it in a bill. So, but this year, we've got, we've got a new guy. We're paying him monthly to have him on call twenty-four seven. And we have used the ACO when you reach to your dog. Wasn't your dog, the town gets to keep the money. Do I have a motion on the money?
So, I know this is probably not part of the meeting, but a secret question. You said this gentleman is available twenty-four seven. Where, where do you find his number?
It's on our website. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Anything else on Article 29? If not, then I ask you for your vote. All in favor of Article 29 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article 29 is approved as presented. Article 30, to see if the town will vote to use CO light for a payment on taxes. Passage is recommended. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to pass.
Certainly. Thank you. Been moved and seconded. Any question from you on Article 30?
Who's the, actually, who's the? Sorry, I don't understand. Good question.
If your property is over assessed, and you come down and meet with the assessor and the inquiries, we have to give you back X amount of dollars. When we make our tax, when we do our tax commitment with the assessor, we have a certain percentage we can put only five percent. Two is towards that. Not that we have a hand. Yeah, sure. Take her to change, so, yeah. Thank you.
You have some questions. One of them really wants to answer.
Any other questions on Article 30? If not, I ask you for your vote. All in favor of Article 30 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 30 is approved as presented. Article 31, to see if the town will vote to charge interest on taxes not paid before a certain date and establish the date and rate of interest. Recommended, the annual rate of eight point five percent on taxes not paid before September thirtieth and not paid before March thirty-first, two installment payments. Passage is recommended. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to pass.
Certainly. Been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 31? Yes.
What was the annual, this annual rate last year? Is that enough?
Yeah, we have an updated one five this year. Our state recommendation. Last year, it was eight percent.
And I would just like to say that I prefer to have notice on our tax bills coming twice a year and not once a year. I wish that we could go back to that and be notified when the second installment is.
We've never sent out two bills. We've always only sent out one.
But you didn't send out until a couple of years ago. Do you remind people, like, can you recall?
We did. We sent out postcards this year to remind people that they were past due.
You did?
Yes, we did. If they were past due.
If they were past.
Yeah.
But not a reminder that's anyone.
No. You can put it in your phone calendar. That's what we tell them.
You know, you.
You can take it. Well, it is, it is. We sent out about twenty-six hundred tax bills. We'd rather not send them out twice a year. We don't have to.
But we don't forget it was on.
Hey, we called to remind you about your registration, so no other towns do that, so.
Any other questions on Article 31? All good. If not, then I ask you for your vote. All in favor of Article 31 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 31 is approved as presented. Article 32, to see if the town will vote to set the interest rate can be paid by the town on abated taxes at true descent of fiscal week. Passage is recommended. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to pass.
Certainly. Been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 32?
I have a question. I can't figure this one out.
Any other questions on Article 32? If not, then I ask you for your vote. All in favor of Article 32 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 32 is approved as presented. Article 33, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector or treasurer to accept prepayments of taxes not yet committed and set the rate of interest at zero percent for overpayments pursuant to Title 36 MRSAA Title VI. Passage is recommended. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to pass.
Certainly. Been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 33? Not seeing any. I ask you for your vote. All in favor of Article 33 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 33 is approved as presented. Article 34, to approve the funds received from the sale of a church in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred dollars to be transferred to the town government capital reserve account. This is recommended. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to pass.
Certainly. Been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 34?
Yes.
So the town building capital account, what restrictions are on use of that fund? Do they have to be used for certain things?
We don't have a restriction on this one. We just figured if one of the buildings needed a new roof, or a new septic, or goes, I don't know, down with this building, a previous one.
Any other questions? Not seeing any then. I ask you for your vote. All in favor of Article 34 is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 34 is approved as presented. Article 35, showing ordinance entitled amendments to the town of Murray cemetery ordinance to be enacted. Passage is recommended. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to pass.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions on Article 34? Not seeing any. So I ask you for your vote. All in favor of Article 35 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article 35 is approved as presented. Article 36, showing ordinance entitled amendments to unify the government with new ordinance for the town of Murray may be enacted. Passage is recommended. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to pass.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 36? Not seeing any here, any? I ask you for your vote. All in favor of Article 36, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 36 is approved as presented. Article 37, showing ordinance entitled municipal land ordinance for the town of Murray may be enacted. Passage is recommended. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to pass.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 37?
Yes.
Is this a new ordinance, or is it just being updated?
New one.
And the reason for the state?
Because numerous alarms of fire department are, people burn their toast, or they're doing the A or B rentals. The fire department has to go respond to these calls, and they get over there, it's just on the line. Then people go kind of shut off, or it happens quite frequently to the same building units, rentals, because... Actually, who, who else?
Sure.
Okay. Please do.
So, among other things, I'm also your assistant fire chief, and the reason we worked on this ordinance, the market has changed. We're not getting long-term, four or five month, I'm going to be a rescue, you know, ski patrol guy, and I'm here for the winter. And he learns how to use the space he's rented. We have a large short-term rental, whether it's, you know, inside Brookside, or Fall Line, or North Peak. It could be, you know, a home on the Gulf Coast. It could be a home up in the peaks. We drive all the way up there, you know, midnight. Got a bunch of really happy folks enjoying their time at their house they've rented. But they don't understand, is that the alarm company has set an alarm because somebody's burnt something on the wall, or they burned their toast or steak? The other part of that is, we might get up there at, you know, dawn, whatever hour of the day it is, and nobody's there. Or the lights are all out. So, and they really don't have an idea that they've tripped this alarm. And we do have multiple calls to the same short-term rental residences all winter long. So that's why I just got rid of it.
So you're not really concerned with just the personal fire alarms that are not connected to anything?
If you burn a steak at your house, we're going to come. Simple as that. But when somebody burns a steak at Fall Line condos, I think everybody here knows what Fall Line condos are. I know you're from away, and you're relatively new here. Fall Line is a giant cross of condominiums that look like this, with, you know, four hundred units in it. But the first thing they do is they open the door to the hallway. So now they've set the alarm off in the entire wing. And all those people are standing outside in pajamas in January, and they're not happy.
And if you burn your steak every time?
Right. We're going to come here. Something that's not in the system.
You're talking to one.
If you need us, they'll be, yeah. And just this is the fact that even these condos, the one bedroom condos, are getting rented out on a weekly basis by different people. It's not the same users that we used to see a few years ago.
Do I even enforce it? I mean, do the people that own condos even know that, that their, that their alarm, they've been set off three or four times?
They do. Their alarm company, we, we have incident reports. And once I see that building, three of them, they're going to get a letter. Hey. More likely, it's going to be the building manager. Because they're also going to get a phone call from the alarm company to come out at three in the morning. So they're also going to put their owners, saying, listen, you've got a problem. You know, fire alarm beep in the hallway keeps going off. You need your alarm company to come take a look at that. We're going to start first with education. They're going to get a letter after the first and second notice. Come the third notice, and they have made any repairs, they're making effort to contact their ADT or cutting in security. Well, then the shame owner. I mean, they're putting, they're putting their Airbnb renters also in danger.
Has there been a set number for what they will be charged?
Yes. Yeah, it's in the packet of information. You know, the, the head one. Oh, you didn't read that one. It's, it's two hundred and fifty dollars. It's, it's two hundred and fifty dollars after three incidences in a calendar year. Yeah.
One, one of our problems with the Airbnbs, they have a list on the wall, and all they look at is how to shut the alarm system off within into the housing. They're not reading the list on the wall. We went to the same house twice in a week and a half with two different renters that never opened the flue to the stove when they started the fire because it's cold. It filled the house, it filled the house full of smoke.
And one thought they had to shut it during rain. It filled up full of smoke.
And then they put the fire out, so they shut the dam, so what happens? It fills the house with smoke. We, we wind up, oh, what are you guys doing here? It fills the house with smoke, we, we wind up, or what are you guys doing here?
Right.
Any other questions? Not seeing any then, I'd ask you to vote, all those in favor of Article thirty-seven as read and explained and discussed, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you, those opposed? Article thirty-seven is approved as presented. Article thirty-eight, to see if the town will vote to authorize municipal officers to accept domain not exceed five thousand dollars on behalf of the town. Passage is recommended, could I have a motion?
Make a motion to pass.
Seconded. Can move seconded. Any question on Article thirty-eight?
Have you received any of your things?
No.
You could beat the first.
Yeah. People said, saying, don't call the fire department.
Yeah.
Very good. Any other questions on Article thirty-eight? If there are none, I'd ask you to vote, all those in favor of Article thirty-eight as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you, those opposed? Article thirty-eight is approved as presented. Article thirty-nine, to see if the town will vote to authorize municipal officers to dispose of tax-acquired property as they deem in the best interest of the town, except that the municipal officers shall first review the state sale process in Title thirty-six MRS, subsection nine forty-three C, if they choose to sell property to anyone other than the former owner. For sale to someone other than the former owner, excess sale proceeds as divided from Title thirty-six MRS, subsection nine forty-three C, shall be returned to the former owner. Passage is recommended, could I have a motion?
Make a motion to pass.
Seconded. Can move seconded. Any questions on Article thirty-nine?
So, so tax-acquired property, I'm assuming that's property that's not, is the rears of tax for, I guess, some long period of time, like a day?
Fifteen months, possibly, but we have, maybe had three, so it's high for the town, so.
Didn't, didn't we used to have a lot of condos if they never paid on?
Tax years, but, yeah. But, I don't know.
Good. Any other? Any other questions? Not seeing any then, I'd ask you to vote, all those in favor of Article thirty-nine as read and explained, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you, any opposed? Article thirty-nine is approved as presented. Article forty, to see if the town will vote to appropriate money received from the registrations of snowmobiles and municipal snowmobile grants to the Windy Valleys Snowmobile Club for the purpose of maintaining the snowmobile trails. Passage is recommended, could I have a motion?
Make a motion to pass.
Seconded.
Can move seconded. Any question on Article forty? Not seeing any then, I'd ask you to vote, all those in favor of Article forty as read, please indicate. Thank you, any opposed? Article forty is approved as presented. Article forty-one, to see if the town will vote to use two hundred thousand dollars for undesignated funds to offset taxes. Passage is recommended, could I have a motion?
Make a motion to pass.
Seconded.
Can move seconded. Any question on Article forty-one? Not seeing any then, I'd ask you to vote, all those in favor of Article forty-one as read, please indicate. Thank you, those opposed? Article forty-one is approved as presented. Article forty-two, to see if the town will vote by written ballot to permanently increase the property tax levy limit by one million seven hundred eighty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars established for the town of Newbury by state law in the event that the municipal budget approved under the preceding articles will resolve in a tax commitment that is greater than the property tax levy limit. Passage is recommended, could I have a motion?
Make a motion to pass.
Seconded. Can move seconded. Any question on Article forty-two? What this means is, we have to have a paper ballot to bring in and give your approval if it's okay to raise the limit.
Now, the target for the, what the rule level will be raised soon?
Um, what we, what you raised so far is one million five hundred twenty-six thousand two hundred and sixteen.
So two hundred thousand below.
Yeah. Twelve below what?
That's your total budget, as written, right here, yes, what was that number again?
Too much. One million five twenty-six two sixteen.
No, two sixteen?
Yeah. Does not count the school.
Right. You made it too much, yeah.
Yeah.
If all the articles approved, as written today.
Yes.
So, when you're ready, I'd ask you to bring the ballots. Yes, it's accepted, you approve? No, if it isn't.
Yes, I'm going. Yeah, nice.
If all voted to vote, you vote.
Yeah.
If so, I'd put it out on the floor and ask the ballots to count. Five, yes. Article forty-two hit fast. You've got to raise the threshold. Article forty-three, hang on.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This comes to the rose for our show minutes, this next arm.
Article forty-three, to see if the town will vote, one, authorize and approve a general obligation bond or revenue anticipation note borrowed from the principal amount not exceeding one million dollars for the purpose of financing road improvements to Willow Road, Sunday River Road, Grant Road, Loma Pine Road, Robert Road, and any other roads damaged due to winter storms in twenty-three and twenty-four, which is expected to be repaid with funds received from the Federal Emergency Management Act, FEMA, two, to authorize issuance of a general obligation bond to the principal amount not exceeding one million dollars in the event insufficient funds are received from FEMA to refund the bond anticipation note authorized herein, plus an amount sufficient to fund investment interest payments on the bond anticipation note issued for said purpose, and any cost or insurance of the bond anticipation note, with the note and bonds to be issued with or without call provisions, and with such dates, maturities, denominations, interest rates, redemption provisions, and other details, including provisions that the bonds may be subject to call or redemption with or without premium, as the select will show the terms. And three, appropriate the proceeds of said note and bonds for the foreboring purpose, plus an amount necessary to fund the interest payments on the bond anticipation note issued for said purpose, and the cost of issuance of the notes and bonds. And, three, three A?
Three A.
Three A. Authorize the select to take all actions necessary to carry out the borrowing. The town treasurer's financial statement that accompanies this question is printed as law. This one, co-estimated debt service on the bond anticipation note is one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, of which principal is one million dollars. An estimated interest at rate of six point six five percent over two years is one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Recommended, pass, could I have a motion?
Make a motion to pass.
Seconded. Can move seconded. Any questions on Article forty?
What is the way to know those words?
Okay.
It's, it's, uh, similar to a home equity. We don't have to pay back what we borrow. Um, we're not sure where the FEMA money's going to come through. So, the last, we just got paid, um, two months ago for the December twenty-two storm. So we figure it's going to take almost two years to get the FEMA money for this one. Um, so, we had to do it this way, because we weren't sure how, we didn't want to raise tax dollars to cover, um, we've got roads to be engineered to a large length. Yeah. So we hired an engineer to do the, the biggest damages in town. So, Grant Road, Sunday River, Letter S section, and then there's a culvert on Loma Pine, only because of the hill that's gathering the water from. I wanted the engineers to take a look at that and make sure that we were putting in the appropriate size culvert for the damages. The road washed out, and the culvert was washed under. So it has to come out and get replaced, we want to make sure we get the right size for that. Uh, we have not been paid for many two thousand twenty-three storms yet either, so.
So, so it costs the town a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in interest to wait for this money that we may have made out there?
Correct.
I mean, if we don't get it, now then we're on hook for the million dollars that we spent.
Right. Up to a million. We're up to a million. We're covering, we're covering our butts with a million. We want to make sure that that covers all the road damage that we have, and we want to make sure they get put back correctly. Our roads were in great shape. We're a very fortunate small community, we have a legal people, a five-year plan for all our roads. Um, yeah, so we want to get them back to that condition.
So that interest is accruing until we get paid? Or we pay it off?
Well, you're right.
Right. But, but in the meantime, we're going to work down.
Yeah, we hired the engineer, he's been on the look, we had a plan from India. FEMA came and inspected everything last week, so they want to look at the engineer, is what he's recommending.
This is, I'm sorry, I've been in the public, she's been waiting.
Um, so, it's a work in progress.
How much have we, uh, how much did we spend on the engineer today?
I don't know. The engineering costs, um, we went up to fifty that, over like thirty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so that's.
Their total repairs, have we, that the engineers were recommending? Have we bought them to download, and what is that total?
We don't have that yet, because we haven't got the engineering report yet. They couldn't do anything with all the snow melt there.
So we don't know how much?
No, we don't. No.
So this is a figure based on a high estimate?
Yeah.
You don't know what you're fixing yet.
Oh, we don't.
Well, I know you know what you're fixing, but you don't know how you're fixing it.
Correct, correct. Like, Grant Road washed out just tall, as tall as they think. There are parts of Grant Road that were wiped out that deep. What we put back in there, uh, froze almost immediately. We, we know we have voids, we already have three sinkholes happen. That all have, everything that's there on Grant Road, for those of you that are familiar with it, is all going to come back out? Yeah. That was an emergency repair, covered under a different category of FEMA funds that, um, it is, and will get reimbursed for, but all that has to come back out and get, and the engineer will tell us what kind of fill, you know, inch and a half stone, and so many fines, some lift heights, not compatible, all of that.
Uh, yeah, we had a question and a comment. Um, does this also, uh, you say a couple of rows is other rows, so I assume this is another?
There's one missing on the left, Valley View. And we have, we have string work that we planned on moving on, Tickle Line and Green Briar. That was some of the main damages that we had in the budget before last year, because it happened right after company.
What, what about Bear River Road?
That's a state road, this is state road.
That's a state road?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha, that was a cool question. So those repairs are coming from this state?
Correct.
I mean, just my statement, I mean, I've been here eight, nine years. I mean, I guess the point is, if you don't, I mean, even though you're paying interest, if you don't prepare, then the damages will just get worse, and will be even more expensive than any, any of us pay, so you might as well fix it. Even if you have to pay for it, and the funds don't come, you're still, you're still money out.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
So, um, Sunday River Road by the alleyway, before they, they had state people visiting the road, is that part state?
Yeah, so there is a section of Sunday River Road up until the post office that is state aid, and they're, they're supposed to be asked off in that this week. I'm excited, I know. But yes, that's why, that's state aid, and that's why buildings that work.
Thank you, all good questions. Anything else? If not, then I'd ask you to vote, all those in favor of Article forty-three as read and explained, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you, those opposed? Article forty-three is approved with minor opposition. And that includes, as we want to believe in. Well done. I, I would. On favor, adjourned? Any opposed?
Going to hang out?